One, two, three.
Time for one more? Please. Crossy. Christmas song? We're trying to.
About one more round of applause for our high school. Unfortunately, I didn't have to inform you all that I've already booked them for Christmas Day. They'll be playing at my house. They certainly will. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are here for the December 8th Vote of Education meeting. If we could all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. Pledge allegiance. All right, thank you, everybody, for attending tonight. I'll let the record show that all board members are present. All right, we have a few announcements we want to begin with before we get into business. Just want to let everybody know, in November, Dr. Romanelli and I had the pleasure of attending the Offshore Wind and Energy Manufacturing Expo at the Cradle of Aviation. We were able to learn about alternative energy and manufacturing companies on Long Island. However, the highlight of the evening was being able to listen to West Isaac senior, Robert Minio, who presented about his engineering internship experience at Designtronics. We were and are so proud of Robert for not only his personal accomplishments, but for how well he represented West Isaac. He was definitely the talk of the evening, and I think a big congratulations is in order for him, so I'd like to give him a round of applause. Speaking of Robert, there he is in the back. We're actually going to break protocol a little bit. I know Robert did want to come down and speak, so we're going to call him down now. Ladies and gentlemen, Robert Minio. And Robert was also just onstage playing for us as well. Just I saw he did a costume change and switched out the same hat, so. Definitely a man of many talents, Robert, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Robert Minio, and I am a senior at the high school. I am here tonight to tell my story about how teachers that I've had at the high school have aided my development as a young and aspiring engineer. Over the summer, I had an internship at a company called Designtronics located in Hicksville. While there, I made connections with many professional engineers and refined my skills in communicating with colleagues and supervisors, which ultimately helped me create a research project that I presented to the company's CEO. My project was to research a robot that the company would implement into their materials delivery system that would eventually make the company $1 million after 10 years of being in place. As a result of this, I was recognized by the Nassau Southern School Boards Association for, as the student ambassador for Long Island Manufacturing. I have been on the radio, in the newspaper, and giving speeches at the Cradle of Aviation detailing my great experience, and it couldn't have been more beneficial for my growth as a student looking to enter the engineering field. The reason I was able to get such an opportunity is because of my robotics teacher, Mr. Binoma, who unfortunately couldn't join us tonight. Mr. B came up to me and my friend Chris one day during class and asked if we would like this opportunity at Designtronics. Of course, we both said yes. Teachers like Mr. B are what make gifted students become extraordinary. Him going out of his way to make connections with the manufacturing company and relate them to his students creates opportunities for us that almost no other students in the nation have. Another example of a teacher going out of their way to benefit their students is how my physics teacher, Mr. Dixon, stays after school once a week to teach the Capitalist Space Physics course to me and a few other students. It is one of the only AP credits accepted by pretty much any college and isn't offered in many other high schools. Class is comparable to an advanced physics classes taught in college, which helps cater to my desire to be an engineer. Lastly, the performance put on tonight by the Chamber Orchestra couldn't have been possible without Mr. Willis. Before high school, I had doubted that I would stick with my instrument all the way through 12th grade, but after spending one day in class with Mr. Willis, I knew I needed to continue playing. Not only was he able to bring the best out of me as a musician, but he is also someone that gives me guidance in almost anything I do. Although these are only a few of the many outstanding teachers that I've had throughout my four years at West Isaac High School, I wanted to highlight their efforts to do what's best for their students and help the students stand out from others. I just finished my application to colleges. I've been saying that if I didn't have teachers to offer extracurriculars like these, I wouldn't even have thought of applying to some of the prestigious schools that I am now. These opportunities have helped me stand out from other students applying for college. I will benefit greatly in my future. Thank you.
On behalf of the Board of Education, thank you and congratulations on all your accomplishments. I know Robert has to get home to his studies, which is why we have the protocol. All right, so as everyone knows, we've had a wonderful start to our school year. I truly feel like we're operating at a nine-plus. Based on observations and discussions, I feel confident and safe. Students are blossoming, teachers are thriving, parents are delighted. There's no substitute for in-person teaching and learning, especially for what we offer here in West Isaac. Unfortunately, there's been a lot of chatter regarding COVID-19 vaccine mandates. This past Tuesday, the board collaborated with Dr. Romanelli and his team, and we decided to be proactive and write Governor Kathy Hochul a letter stressing the importance of remaining in-person for learning and asking that she provide our parents with choice regarding medical decisions related to COVID-19 and their children. Quote, "To be clear, we are supportive of any families who choose to vaccinate their children and any families who choose for their child to wear masks to school." We are, however, not in support of taking away this choice. Prior to tonight's board event meeting, all board members signed the letter, and it will be promptly mailed to her. It will also be available for parents to read on our webpage. One further announcement. During the president's report later on tonight, the board will adopt a resolution to hold a special district meeting on January 24th, 2023, in the West Isaac High School between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. The community will be voting on the using of capital improvements consisting of installing air conditioning district-wide and replacing fire alarms at Bayview, Manituck, Open Up, and Fall J Blue Elementary Schools, as well as Beach Street and Udon Road Middle Schools. In addition, we'll be looking to upgrade to building management system district-wise. District-wide, I'm sorry. All this comes in at an estimated maximum cost of $8.4 million and to appropriate and expend up to approximately $7.3 million from the General Capital Reserve Fund and up to approximately $1.1 million from the General Capital Two Reserve Fund. Very exciting times for our district as we look to continue ways to improving the learning environment and increase safety for our students. At this time, I'd like to invite anyone from the public who would like to speak on an agenda item, and we do. That would be John Howard.
Good afternoon. Thank you for taking my request. I have a few things to ask you. First thing off the bat is that I'd like to see some of the prompting that precisely be used to reform the people that we have board education meetings every month. I'd be particularly talking about the high school entrance with electric sign. I'd like to see that first. It's my idea have board a meeting. Now, I'd like to see that come nine days before the meeting itself. That would start Wednesday, the week before the meeting, up to Thursday, the board of the meeting. Aside from that right now, which is easy to do in a way, I think, I'd like to see three other schools have signs. Math and Latin, it's very little signs in the road that they can see. There will be Beast Street here and Udon, and also Westbrook, which is not Westbrook anymore. You went out to Rhythm Dance Company, I think, am I correct?
Mine, yes.
Now, I know we could probably easily have school property that we own, that lease. If possible, have that promptly released. Westbrook, have some sort of assignment to. I don't know what legality with the leases. Okay, another thing, I think the three-minute time limit for a lot of discussion is very short for a lot of people to talk to. I look online, I see everybody seems to go over three minutes, four if not more. I'd like to see if you can raise the time limit to four or five minutes. I know you probably have to go by the Bible or something like that, so that's a bit drastic to pad themselves. I just think, you know, what time, what's pushing the issue? One thing else. The thing about time limits would help a lot of discussion. I know that there could be very heavy items come up, that multiple people, you might have to go past 10 o'clock, but that's necessary to get the whole story out. The other question I want to know is, it's a sore point for everybody, Masala. Is Masala a school on our West Isaac School District? Is it a school with name?
It's a, I don't understand your question. It's not currently being used as a school.
But it's a school.
It is technically a school grounds, yes.
And any updates you have on that?
Yeah, so we have, we had a committee, an advisory committee that presented us several different options. We took one of those options, and we are moving forward with that and investigating the process of turning Masala using refurbishing school for West Isaac schools.
For West Isaac schools?
Yes.
And about the security there? I hate to see something happen in the works. Is the security on top of everything there?
We have, I don't know if you wanted to touch base on that, but our security is 24/7, is it not? And they are over all the schools, and they do check out every school throughout, across the day and the evening.
But they know it's open all the time.
The fields.
The fields are open.
Yes.
Also, schools open to be broken into all the time.
Understood.
And that just meant?
Understood.
People still cop it, everything else?
I missed that last part, I'm sorry.
They still cop other things inside buildings, a problem.
Yeah, it's obviously something that our security is aware of, and I mean, not going to state, I don't think we have any issues with any ratings or any vandalism, so I'd like to think that our security is doing its job.
Okay, thanks, we want to reach out.
Of course, thank you very much. Okay, at this time, a union motion, please, to approve the minutes of the November 22nd, 2022 meeting session. Discussion, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to personnel with Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Tussi. May I have a motion for the approval of the personnel agenda as listed in your backlog?
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, thank you, Mr. Taylor. Pre-K ready? Mrs. Morrison.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'm pleased to announce that pre-K registration for the 23-24 school year will take place from January 3rd to February 3rd. Registration will take place online via the district website. Postcards are being sent to all households in the district, and letters are being sent in that regard to any households that we are aware may have a pre-kindergarten student for next school year. So please make sure to take a look. If you have any questions, please contact the registrar's office. Just for clarification purposes, all of our students who register within the time limit will receive placement in the program. We have 40 spots available in each of our four school buildings, and then any students above those 40 will be placed at the community-based organization that the district partners with. Kindergarten registration will take place from December 5th to January 16th. Once again, it will take place via the district website. Any student that is currently registered in the pre-K program does not have to submit any additional paperwork. If the registrar does need something from a parent that is already registered, they will reach out to them. The New York State ELA and MAM test for students in grades three through eight will be administered via their Chromebooks this spring. Practice for taking the assessments via those one-to-one devices is scheduled to start in January. We want to make sure that our students are prepared, that they are comfortable, that they know how to work the various aspects of taking the assessment, so we will begin that practice with them in January. Great learning experiences are happening throughout the district. Students in Mrs. Politano's Social Studies class at Udon recently completed an immigration project in which they researched their family's ancestry. They had an opportunity to speak with their parents and grandparents in regard to their family history and how and when they immigrated to the United States. Thanks to Mrs. Yose's efforts at the high school, the IB students connected with an IB school in Canada and met virtually to discuss their shared experiences. Our IB students will have ongoing dialogue with the school, and we are inviting other schools from other countries to visit and join us on those Zoom meetings, so it's a really great opportunity for our students. Today at Bayview, our third, fourth, and fifth grade students, along with parents, visited the Arbile Theater in Babylon to see Beauty and the Beast. It is great to be out and about once again on field trips. At Manituck, Corey the Dribbler recently taught scholars how to dribble six basketballs at once while fostering a message of never giving up, showing respect for others, and working towards your goals. And I would just like to take this opportunity to wish everybody a very happy holiday and a healthy new year. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Morrison, on to our report of board committees, and we'll start with Mr. McCann and the Health and Wellness.
Thank you, Mr. Tussi. Happy holidays to everyone. Great to have the orchestra tonight. The Health and Wellness Committee met on November 15th. Members present in attendance were Mr. Haran, Mr. Compatello, Grace Kelly, myself, Sharon Kerrigan, Diane Seppi, Dr. Corino, Melany Stella Wiles, Barbara Boris, Trilly Knestra, Rhonda Pratt, Trish Maletti, and Christine Alefante. We spoke about the Coloron success we had this year. The Coloron was held in October. We had over 250 participants. We had the most sponsorships ever by community organizations and businesses, so thanks to all the businesses out there. We had great support by adults and student volunteers. It was the highest level of volunteers that we've ever had for it, so great participation there. So great participation there. We are releasing, we're putting together our Health and Wellness newsletter. So if anyone has any contribution to that, they can send those to Tim Haran in the office. We talked about the December Family Connect Night on Thursday, December 15th. It's our gingerbread making party, six to eight. We actually had an overwhelming response to that meeting, which is now going to be moved, as of today, to the high school in the lower gym and the cafeteria. So I believe we have over 400 people signed up for that. So next Thursday, there's a, there's a nominal fee for it, and we are $5 per family. Pizza and drinks provided. You can bring your own food as well. And you can register on my School Bucks. And I know that the committee is actively trying to find more gingerbread houses so that we can make them all. But it's great to see the community come together for events like that. So we're looking to plan more Family Connect Lights to bring the community together for, for the future. So in doing our own business, we had, we discussed a recent Narcan training at the West Side of Fire Department. It was very eye-opening for those who attended, but it's certainly an important part of education for the entire community. We looked at the, the West Side of Breast Cancer Coalition. We had donated in the amount of, over the last 20 years, $45,660 to that society. So it does the great work for the, the community. Our next meeting is Tuesday, January 10th at 9:30 at Fall J Blue Cafeteria. And thanks to everyone for attendance.
I'm just gonna interrupt. Mrs. Kinestra, any thought of using like the Graham crackers and milk cartons for the little guys who play gingerbread houses?
It's one for family.
It's weird, one for family. Have you taken donations for them, or like someone goes out? How are you getting all? Because I want to help and ask this, I want to.
Just saying that.
Yeah.
Oh, they are now actually in the PTA closet that I told.
All right. If you reach out, please let me know if there's anything I can do.
Sure.
Great, thank you.
Can you assemble the whole?
I showed you pictures of all my kids, so I don't know if you want all of that. Moving on to the Education Committee with Mr. Antonello.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Tussi. All right, the Education Committee met on 12/6, Tuesday, at B Street. I had an attendance for myself and Mr. Tom Taylor, Mr. Tussi, Mr. Brown, Mr. Kelly. Administrator present included Dr. Romanelli, Assistant Superintendent Mrs. Morrison, Assistant Superintendent Mrs. Pilati, and Mr. Brian Taylor. The first issue discussed was the C SIP graduation requirements. Board discussed the issues students have had due to COVID interruptions of meeting the goals necessary. So it's discussed waiving that for this year. And that the students who were able to complete those hours will be recognized as graduation for the court. We'll be discussing pre-K registrations going on in January, next month. We also discussed the Equity Committee meeting that met on December 5th. The important points of that first meeting were to focus on areas of discussion, setting goals for future meetings, needs assessment, and community expansion. We discussed the Equity Program, which is a supplement for foundations to help the phonics for pre-K and K. We also discussed the E and L report cards. Also discussed the high school's course catalog that's being finalized at this time. Also discussed remote instruction and virtual snow day instruction, possibility after two snow days. And we finished talking about the letter to the governor, which Mr. Tussi detailed earlier before. The meeting ended at 7:30.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Antonello. Onto the Finance Committee with Mrs. Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Tussi. The Finance Committee met on December 6th, 2022. Committee members in attendance were myself. Board member attendance was Rich Antonello, Debbie Brown, Tom Compatello, and Anthony Tussi. Administrators present were Dr. Romanelli, Elisa Pilati, Dawn Morrison, and Brian Taylor. The purpose of the meeting was to review the warrants for the month and discussion of pertinent fiscal matters. The meeting was called audit at 7:30. The following were presented and accepted by the committee. The Treasuries Report, school district funds for September and October, and extracurricular for October, payroll summary for October, internal claims audit report for November, system manager audit trail for 10/27/2022 to 11/30/2022, payroll certification for 11/4/2022, 11/18, and 12/2/22, and the review of the warrants. Reviewed board agenda finance items, approval of budget transfers, approval of surplus miscellaneous books at the West Side of High School that are in poor condition, and then approval of donations. There was a $500 donation for the Nicole Kusler Performing Arts Music Scholarship from Dorothy Kusler. And varsity lacrosse jerseys, West Side of varsity lacrosse booster club, valued at $3,000. Next audit committee was the, was here this evening at 7 o'clock to discuss the internal detailing testing done on the technology department and the annual risk assessment from the district. The RFP for transportation was recently completed, and the results will be on the January board agenda. And earlier, Mr. Tussi mentioned the capital reserve proposition vote will be held on Tuesday, December 24th, at the West Side of High School gymnasium. Meeting was adjourned at 7:30, 8:00 PM.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Kelly. Onto the Special Education Committee, Mrs. Brown.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Tussi. The Special Education Committee met on December 6th at 8:30 AM via teleconference. In attendance were myself, board member Ron McGinnis, administrators Dawn Morrison and Jean Dowling. We discussed updates to student placements in special education. We also discussed our upcoming tour of special education programs scheduled for December 12th. The meeting adjourned at 8:30 AM, and the next committee meeting will be January 4th. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Brown. And again, tonight, at 7:00 PM, the Audit Committee met. All board members were present. In addition was Dr. Romanelli, Mrs. Morrison, Mrs. Pilati, and Mr. Taylor. The Audit Committee met with the district's internal auditors, Colin and Danowski, to discuss two reports. The first was a review of the detailed testing done in the area of information technology. And the second report was an overall risk assessment update. The board will approve these reports and the related corrective action plans at the January board meeting. Now, we'll move into business items with Mrs. Pilati.
Thank you, Mr. Tussi. Good evening. May I have a motion for the approval of budget transfers 4261 through 4265 for the General Fund, and 4258 through 4260 for the Capital Fund?
So moved, sorry. Second, discussion, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Sorry, I'm flung by Mr. Tussi's need for his tissue.
May I have a motion for the approval of surplus miscellaneous books at the West Side of High School?
So moved. Second, discussion, I'll leave my tissue. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the resolution for the donation from the varsity, West Side of varsity lacrosse booster club of the West Side of varsity lacrosse jerseys valued at $3,000?
So moved. Second, discussion, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the resolution related to the donation of $500 for the Nicole Kusler Performing Arts Music Scholarship from Dorothy Kusler?
So moved. Second, discussion, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Pilati. Moving on to the President's Report. Item A will be tabled until we have further discussion. So we'll move on to item B. Have a motion, please, of approval for the resolution regarding destruction of unused full ballot booklets from the May 17th, 2022 election. So moved. Second, discussion, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Have approval of the resolution regarding special district meeting, January 24th, 2023? So moved. Second, discussion, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Have approval and approval on the notice of the special meeting? Discussion, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Superintendent for Dr. Romanelli.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tussi. So I've been continuing to just travel around the district over the past few weeks and checking into all the many programs we have going on across our buildings. I was able to visit the Planetarium with the Open Up third graders this week and check out a trip that they had there. It was really the perfect demonstration of engaged learning and just excitement in learning. You know, we always love as educators and students, something ends and there's like a, oh, man, like we have to go type of thing. And that was what we heard at the Planetarium the other day. I was told also that I have to come back for the kindergarten visit and bring some earplugs because it does get a little bit loud, but a lot of excitement there. And we're planning on hosting some community events in the Planetarium this year. So be sure to check that out if you have not visited yet. We're so lucky to have that space in our district. And I was just so impressed with the level of instruction that could take place for students right here in West Islip. So it's very, very excited about that. I was also able to visit the alternative school this week, which is housed in the evenings at West Side of High School. And just really want to commend Dr. Markwood and also Ms. Sarah Costas for their work in coordinating the school and all the educators that are part of that program. The program basically, for those that don't know, are for students that are not thriving necessarily in a traditional during-the-day setting in high school, but have this alternative school where they can go to excel in their academics. And I was informed that all students are on their way to either graduate diploma or advanced graduate diploma this year, which we're very proud of, and happy that we can make that accommodation for all students to be successful there. And just, you know, I've been to a lot of concerts in my educational career. But I have to say, the first time around in West Islip for me, I have to comment that our students in our music department truly are a level up from other districts that I've seen in performances. I'm sure you can see that from tonight, start of tonight's board meeting. And really, our music department is something that we should really be proud of as a district. And I know Mr. Tussi referenced our letter to Governor Hochul. I'll send that out to the whole community tomorrow and post on our website. So you'll have a copy of the letter to review right when we put it in the mail.
And that's it? Thank you. Outstanding. Thank you, Dr. Romanelli. All right, we're gonna move into the public session here. So I'm gonna call Mr. John Hierpah.
Thanks, Mr. Tussi, for making me a bad name, Dr. Romanelli. Congratulations on all the great things happening in the district. We're proud to be a resident here for the last 15 years. Congratulations on your commitment to upgrading the buildings, air conditioning, and other things. I'm just inquiring as a representative, president of the West Side of Baseball Booster Club, if there has been any global or focal discussions about some upgrades to baseball stadium and also some pulsating. You know, here that maybe additional turf and some other things going on. So I just wanted to inquire tonight.
Yeah, I can definitely say that we've had some discussions at our most recent building grounds meeting about updating with some additional turf and whether to the softball field, the baseball outfield, and whatnot. I guess the safest thing I can say is it's on our long-term plan. It is definitely on our radar. We have a list of accomplishments that we want, and that's definitely one of them. I don't know that you would want to add to that. I don't know if I have anything on that.
Okay, so we, we did actually discuss this, as you mentioned, Mr. Tussi, at some of our most recent committee meetings. And we've been looking at, it's definitely something that's on the list and been looking at where we're going to be using funding for potential future capital projects. So a few of those broken down by years, you know. Currently, we're looking at the air conditioning and fire systems and looking at future use of capital reserve funds. That was one of the top items on our, our potential projects.
Great. Facilities are great. We appreciate it, but we're always looking to improve wherever we can. Thank you, Matt. Happy holidays to you.
Safe too, and thank you for your time with Booster Club. Appreciate it, Matt. All right, I'd like to call down, Ms. Varanique Walrep.
Good evening. I wanted to start by saying thank you for being proactive about the letter to Governor Hochul. I'm very, very happy to hear that. I also want to thank you guys for moving forward with the vote for air conditioning, hopefully. It's nice to know that some of this stuff is not falling on deaf ears and that you guys do listen to us sometimes when we're ranting and raving up here. So I appreciate that. I do have a question regarding armed guards. Has that been discussed any further at all? I don't know if I missed something along the way, so.
So we currently have a school resource officer in the district. However, the school resource officer is split with another district with Printwood. Our school resource officer is available anytime we've called and needed someone. He's right there. We did meet with the Suffolk County Police Department to request either someone full-time or even a split with a closer, you know, district. And we were also pursuing the possibility of even subsidizing. If we're not actually sure if that's, you know, legal at this point in time, but just the possibility of looking into having our own, if they weren't able to provide for us, if the district could potentially bond something like that, and having a, another school resource officer in the, in the area. So that's kind of our discussions we've been having now.
Okay, so there's been no discussion on potentially arming guards that we already have, being that they are mostly retired police and military?
We've been currently pursuing the, the currently, current law enforcement. And then if that doesn't pan out, then we would, of course, start the discussion if, if we wanted to look into that.
Okay, awesome.
And I can, I can add to that because I know it was a topic, it's not even a topic. So we, we thought the best course was to use Suffolk County resource, Suffolk County Police Office is obviously training professional. So that's to Dr. Romanelli's point, the discussions that are going on, potentially have someone full-time, even if we have to subsidize it. So we think that's the best route so that they're present in West Islip all the time, within a minute of any building. So to have that instead of trying to manage our own armed guards at this time, so.
Okay.
So we'll have those discussions.
Okay, awesome. I also wanted to briefly touch on the Listen Program. I'm very grateful that we're finally pursuing having teachers certified in our district. I think that's a huge step forward, and I'm, I'm very happy to hear about that. I did want to ask if we're doing anything about our summer reading program? I think it's not been, what's the word to use? It, kids have not come out of there having, having learned very much. In a lot of cases, they've still regressed. And so I'm wondering, is there, is it under discussion to improve this in any way? What can we do to improve it? And how else can we improve the Special Education Department? I think a lot of kids are still falling through the cracks, particularly with like the learning loss from the pandemic and everything else.
Mrs. Walrep, in regard to the summer reading program, are you referencing the program that Mrs. Pratt runs down at Fall J Blue?
I am, yes.
Okay. Actually, we have seen very positive results in regard to that program. At the end of the school year, all of the principals share data with Mrs. Pratt in regard to where each of the students who attends the program leads as far as their benchmark level and areas where they need, they need remediation. And at the end of the summer, data is kept throughout the summer. And at the end of the summer, data goes back to the buildings in regard to how the students close out in the program. And we have seen great success in our students with, you know, not only stopping regression, but also progress in our students. So if maybe I can reach out to you, if you can maybe speak with me with more specificity in regard to, you know, what you're aware of, and then we can go forward from there.
Yeah, sure. I'm sure it's a case-by-case basis. My older son took part in it last summer, and he did not specifically have aggression, but I've spoken with other parents whose, whose children have. So I know that they benchmark them before, and they benchmark them after, and you get like a progress report at the end, so you see what changes have been made. But I feel like there's always room for improvement also, so.
Sure, I'll be happy to reach out to you, and we can discuss that.
Okay.
Thank you.
And if I could just comment just on special education, just because I know that you mentioned that at the end, Ms. Walrep. So I personally can say, you know, that I have met with a number of parents in the district over the past few months who've come into my office or talked informally in passing. And people have shared a variety of concerns, you know, and also things we're doing well, things we can improve on throughout the district. And what I've done is any sort of time where I've been approached with concern in the Special Ed Department, in the special ed department, I've been able to sit down with Ms. Dowling and Ms. Dorothy and talk about, you know, concerns that I've heard. They've been extremely receptive, and I know that they are really working hard to make sure that we're providing everything we can for our special education students. So, all I would say is that if there are any parents out there, you know, who have specific concerns, and we're really trying to address anything that's coming our way and always reflecting, like, you know, if you bring up the summer reading program, I think that, you know, rather than even talking about one specific program, you know, I arrive in August, but would love to just really review all of our summer programs and see if there's maybe additional programs we want to put in place. We want to be effective, really, is our goal. So, we'll definitely take a look. We're always reflecting and trying to move forward the best way possible, so.
I appreciate that. You've definitely been very responsive, so it's nice. It's a nice change. All right, thank you. I hope you all have a good evening and happy holidays.
You too, thank you. Okay, I'm going to invite Catherine Abatela.
Hello. I'm just wondering if you can speak a little to the decision-making process that went into the policy change regarding having to change for Jim?
I'm going to start off, well, we start off and then end. So, listen. One of the things with the changing policy, I think since the beginning of time, kids don't like changing in locker rooms. As a person who taught phys ed for the first 10 years of his teaching career, locker rooms have always been a potential danger area. High number of kids, not a lot of supervision. Sometimes middle-school-aged kids, even high-school-aged kids make poor choices in the locker room. During COVID, when we did not change, we saw that it was, we can still have an effective PE program. And I think the change was pretty much made because no one likes changing locker room. I can't, I don't know anyone who would say, yeah, I'll change in a locker room. How many kids? And I'm coaching middle-school girls volleyball right now, and we have a beautiful locker room, and I have 11 girls that are online in the bathroom to change because that's where they're more comfortable changing. So, I think the policy was changed to benefit everybody, especially for those who don't like to use locker rooms. Correct me if I'm wrong, if you want to change your locker room and it's still available for them?
Right, it absolutely is. And I do want to say that that change was made very systematically. So, Mr. Haran, who is our director of athletics, actually surveyed, we have his listserv that he surveyed from the county to see, you know, are you having students change in the locker room or not this year? Many districts moved away from that practice during COVID, and some people decided to go back to changing requirement in the locker room. Other people decided to stay away from it. And then if you showed up to school in your physical education clothing, you could participate in class type of thing. So, conservatives listserv saw that many districts were moving away from the change in requirement for a variety of reasons. Also, then met with the physical education department in West Islip to talk to teachers at the elementary, middle, and high school level to see if everyone was comfortable with that because we did want to make a collective decision. And the department did feel that it was time to remove the requirement. So, I would say that, you know, it really was a collaborative decision, and a lot of different factors went into it. And that was kind of where we wound up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I do just want to, if I could just add one more thing. You know, there is the whole locker room concept. Mr. Tussi is so right. We hear from students for a variety of reasons, whether they're comfortable changing in the locker room or not. We have students who change in the bathroom sometimes, or the nurses' offices, things like that. But there are some districts that have really explored the remodeling of locker rooms and kind of like a single-use type, like a changing room in a department store type thing, or different models that students are more comfortable with. So, that may be something that we might want to look into in the future.
Sure, I think that's definitely worth having a conversation of.
Sure.
Okay, we'll bring up Laura Verde. I don't know if I say it wrong every time. Did I mispronounce it again?
It's hearing.
It's hearing. Eventually.
That's all right. Okay, so, it's great that you guys are writing the letter to Hochul. So, my question is, obviously, I know our tax dollars pay for attorneys and legal representation for the Board of Education and WHITA, correct?
Yes, for WHITA, not for White, not for WHITA. Just, they have, WHITA has their own lawyers.
And, okay, so, we don't pay for that? We just pay for legal representation for the Board of Ed and whom else?
Well, our legal counsel will represent everyone who's employed for the district, if that's what you're asking.
Okay, well, so, my question really is if, because we all know Hochul is, a lot of us believe and strongly believe that she is coming hard and fast for our children. She wants all the masks. She wants them vaccinated. And a large amount of this community is not going to vaccinate these children. My opinion. So, what is Plan B? Are we able to get legal representation paid by our tax dollars to fight for our children? Or what are we going to do if she pretty much takes that piece of paper that you're going to write, as well as all the other school districts, and throws it right in the trash? What are you going to do?
Well, I think that we are, you know, really trying to be proactive in this case. And I think that, you know, the talk that I've had with, you know, many other superintendents is that there are many other districts that are looking to write letters like this, make statements like this. And the hope is that that won't fall on deaf ears. And so, we're kind of on phase one right now of this and trying to get ahead of things. You know, and last year, year before, we weren't able to kind of get ahead. And we're hopeful that this time we will be able to.
Okay, but we know that phase one last year took a long time with the whole masks. This year, it's not going to be so fast. It's not going to be so slow. She's already talking about putting it in play next year. And next year's around the corner. We're in December, what? Today's December 7th, Eve. So, it's going to come quick. So, all the capital improvements that we're going to do to these schools, fantastic. We've been fighting for it, but unfortunately, it's probably going to be wasted money if we don't figure out a way to stop her from putting these mandates in place. And school districts are going to have a huge, what is it? What is it, D? Yes, well, it's going to be mass exodus, 100%. And you're going to see people moving their families. I don't know if I can sit here and homeschool my kids. I'm probably going to have to leave the state. I don't want to leave the state. This is my home. But there's only so long that my parents are going to be able to stay home and educate my children because I'm not going to do remote learning. It's, you guys are going to lose the money from two of my children, and I have a third one behind it. And I know I'm not the only one. And then you're going to have to eventually have to get rid of maybe closed schools or layoff teachers. At that point, WHITA is going to get affected. We need to come up with a Plan B. We have to have some kind of backup.
And, you know, to your point, it's, wouldn't just be a West Islip situation.
Correct.
So, you know, I really, I don't know how to go about answering that question other than saying that we're going to continue to do everything, and how to be proactive, and to try to see what preventative measures we can take and how we can continue to support our community and support our students.
And I would just say that we don't want our families leaving either. We're going to do everything we can to advocate for our families in West Islip.
Right, but I think we need legal representation at this point, too. Why aren't we looking into meeting with law firms and at least getting some kind of ball rolling? Because the only way she was stopped from keeping the masks on those kids was when, what was it? Demetrio was CJ Law. Who was it? CJ Law. He got those masks off those kids for that one day. And you heard all of us up in arms pissed off that the kids had the masks off for a day and came back with the masks back on. It should be pro-choice, not mandatory.
Well, we are going to agree with you, and I guess we can go back and have conversations and see what our options could be in terms of legal representation.
For the kids?
Of course.
And it shouldn't be legal representation. Of course, our tax dollars should be paying for this.
Okay, it's noted. We'll have that conversation, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
Hello. I just want to add a few, like, touch on a few things about special ed. I will have to say, Dr. Rominelli, I don't know if it's just you or whatever you brought to the district, but since you came to the district, the vibe was different. The vibe was very different and a lot more communication. Dealing with the special ed department prior to you was very difficult. And I will say now, it's, I won't say it's delightful, but it's definitely moving in the right direction. There's definitely some bumps, but it's a world of difference from last year. Ms. Dorothy, I love her. She, I think, is, this is my first time dealing with her, and I think she's the greatest asset our special ed department has right now. She actually listens, she responds, and she communicates with me. She has, she has young child, so it's really nice to see somebody that can kind of relate with you. I was wondering if there has been any thought or discussion on potentially adding more ICT classrooms to each building?
Are you talking about the elementary, middle, high school level or just all in general?
In general, but I mean, the elementary ideally would be the start of it. I have a daughter who they, her doctor requested she get put in an ICT classroom, and I didn't want to because she had gone through enough change this year, and I couldn't add that to her plate, to move to a completely different side of town.
Right, so, we look really, and right now, we're actually going through the budget process, obviously, for next year. We're looking at staffing and things like that. And what we're trying to do is put together the optimal ratio for students. You know, when you talk about a ICT setting and the cybersetting, really, the rule of thumb is to try to stick around one-third in the classrooms. If you have a class of 21 students, maybe you have around seven students that have IEDs or an integrated coaching setting. So, that's the first step that we take a look at. And we try to make decisions that are, this is something that really, we are talking about right now, and I hear you. You know, one of my, my son's just recently classified, and he was just moved into ICT, so I can relate to you there. And, you know, it becomes interesting when you have five students on a grade level, you know, who are ICT students, and you have two in one elementary, one in another, one in another, one in another. So, the district will have to really start to make some decisions about that. Is, you know, would we fund for teachers for the district so that those students are in their, are in their home school? Or is it something that we feel that we can have students who attend one elementary school together, get that optimal ratio, and go from there? So, that really is the decision. So, we are having those conversations, and totally can understand, you know, where you're coming from.
Absolutely. I agree.
And if I could answer that, we're definitely having those conversations because having spent a lot of time in that area, I do believe that every child should have that opportunity to have the environment that's best for them in their own building. So, I know those discussions are ongoing.
Yeah, the ICT setting, I have been working preschool, and I have been put into different ICT classrooms, and it's incredible to see how the kids react. And I know my daughter would absolutely thrive in ICT classroom. But instead of ICT, we now have to take the route of medication to try and get her through the school year. So, if, even if it's like you can have ICT classrooms on like hour-half of the town, like Openock, Manituck, and that can kind of like interchange, that would be a start. But as long as it's on the radar, it's something that's being considered. It's relieving to parents like me, and I'm sure you can understand to be able to say, my kid is going to thrive in this classroom, and I don't have to move them across town. So, thank you. Happy holidays, everyone.
So, fully adjourned, I just want to say we've had several people mention the change of the vibe in the schools, and it has not gone unnoticed with this board as well. And we're grateful for the work that Dr. Rominelli and his team and all the staff and the teachers have done. And we are thrilled with the success that our children are having. And I just want to continue to say to you guys at this board, we'll continue to do everything that's power to make sure that everything continues in that direction. We are committed to your children. We're committed to our children, and we're committed to the staff. And just, you know, we love what we do.